Welcome to your City Commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. In accordance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting can be viewed live on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to view the meeting using one of these options. The Leavenworth City Commission meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19, face coverings and social distancing is required to attend the meeting. Refer to the agenda packet on the city website on how to reserve a seat and/or submit comments. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 p.m. and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is employee, new employee welcome. And normally we'd be doing this with the new employees here, but we aren't right now. So I will just announce our new employees. First employee, Wayne Files, was hired on October 22, 2020 as an equipment operator 1 for the street department. He attended Lansing High School. Christopher Moke, Christopher was hired on October 2020 as a WPC operator 1. He graduated from Battleground High School. Kaitlyn Akri, Kaitlyn was, Kaylin, Kayle, I'm sorry, I'm screwing these names all up and I apologize to the employees. Kaylin Akri, Kaylin was hired in November 11, 2020 as a telecommunications specialist. She graduated from Pleasant Ridge High School and obtained her certification as a nursing assistant from Highland Community College. Next is Brandon Wing. Brandon was hired on November 19, 2020 as a Solid Waste laborer. He obtained his GED. Anthony Abney, Christopher Abney, Christopher was hired on December 10, 2020 as a firefighter. He graduated from St. Pius X High School. Next is Nicholas Hall. Nicholas was hired on December 10, 2020 as a firefighter. He graduated from De Soto High School. Cassidy Fox, Cassidy was hired on January 21, 2021 as a police officer. She graduated from Apple Valley High School. Whitney Harmon was hired on January 21, 2021 as a receivables license coordinator. She graduated from Burke Burnett High School. And Jacob Cuneo, Jacob was hired on February 4, 2021 as a police officer. He graduated from Lincoln High School. And then Susan Schlenker, Susan was hired on February 18, 2021 as a part-time administrative clerk for Solid Waste. She graduated from Leavenworth High School. Please join me in welcoming all these employees. And again, I apologize for butchering your names. Next item on the agenda, the minutes of the February 13, 2021 regular meeting. Any comments or changes needed on the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I move to approve minutes from February 23, 2021, regular meeting.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Minutes of the February 23, 2021 meeting have passed. Next item on the agenda, public comment. Public comment for items not on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Please state your name and address. Comments are to be limited to two to three minutes. The commission will not take any action on items, on public comment items. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the commission? Yes, ma'am, want to come up to the podium here?
I intend to have a small podium.
Okay. If you give those to the clerks, you'll pass them out. And state your name and address for the record.
My name is Erica Casala and I live at 315 Arch Street here in Leavenworth. I was wanting to speak about composting here in Leavenworth. I know there are no current rules, regulations, or standards. And currently, I do have a neighbor that is composting and the smell during the summer is pungent. It is not covered, so animals, cats, dogs, squirrels, birds, and the sort do tend to get into it and drag things around. Several things have made it into my yard over the last year or so that they've had it. And since there are no rules or guidelines, I did find that our neighbors over in Lansing do have some that I think are quite reasonable and would be a good addition to the Leavenworth code.
Okay, we have your information here and I appreciate you coming tonight and giving us this information.
All right, thank you very much for your time and have a lovely evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider bids for replacement police vehicles.
Please Chief Kitchens for this item?
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, the Police Department is before the governing body this evening, asking for you to award a bid to Shawnee Mission Ford in the amount of $88,886 to purchase two 2021 Ford Police Interceptor SUVs. Every year, the Police Department conducts a review of its fleet and determined that this year, we need to replace two vehicles that have reached the end of its useful life cycle. During the course of our process, we prepared specifications and released bids and received two of them, one from Shawnee Mission Ford, the other from Landmark Dodge. Landmark Dodge was rejected in the process for failure to meet the bid specifications. Funds were allocated in the 2021 capital budget in the amount of $126,000 for two police patrol vehicles plus their equipment and installation. The remaining amount of money available, if you were to award this bid tonight, would be $37,114, which would go to the replacement of equipment associated with the police cars, overhead lights, cages, the equipment that goes inside of the police car. Again, I would ask you to award a bid to Shawnee Mission Ford for a total price of $88,886 for two 2021 black and white Ford Police Interceptor SUVs. And I'll do my best to answer whatever questions that you might have.
Okay, Chief Kitchens, how old are the ones that you're replacing?
So we have a general rule about replacing vehicles that they are either 10 years old or in excess of 100,000 miles. Typically speaking, patrol vehicles that are the ones that are driven by the officers are well in excess of 100,000 miles after about three and a half or four years. So in this instance, we'd apply that rule of replacing the vehicle that has more than 100,000 miles on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chief Kitchens, you may have, you may have covered this, but once the vehicles are purchased, then there's an installation of equipment that the patrol officers will need to perform their, perform their duties?
Yes, sir. So typically what we've been able to do is take some equipment off of the old car that we can recycle. As we are involved in the transition from cars to SUVs predominantly, there's a little bit more expense associated with that. Some of the things obviously just won't work and so we'll just have to buy new equipment. Again, overhead lights, brackets, cages, the stuff that goes inside the car that runs the computer, antennas, all of that stuff will need to be acquired and installed and so the vehicle can be operational.
Assuming that the commission approves this action and this request this evening, what are you looking at as far as the timeline for acquiring the vehicles?
They will go into, they will get ordered because these are a special production. And so typically, we receive new police cars around August is when we receive them. And it takes 30 to 45 days or thereabouts to take the old stuff off and then put the new stuff on.
Got it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I see we're, the Interceptor SUVs, is this a special engine that the public cannot get?
Yes, it's designed for police use, a little bulkier suspension, you know.
It's more suspension than the, it's not like a 4.27 or 4.26 kind of your?
No, sir, I think it's a V6, but it's turbocharged and so it's a little bit, you know, it's essentially the.
It's not like the, just being a police interceptor.
Correct.
What were those, my grandmother teased that the big Crown Vics?
Right, the big, we went from Crown Vics, they got rid of those, now we had Dodge Chargers. They made those smaller and so we're just going to transition over to the SUVs.
So these are just, have a better suspension, et cetera, for the?
Right. They'll catch a guy that's running from us if we happen to chase them and need to bring them back. We're satisfied with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the long-term goal is to transition, like to do away with the cars and just go strictly to SUVs?
That's correct, a mostly SUV fleet simply for space, equipment, all of the things associated with an officer. It's just getting longer and longer, the list, so we really need the room. Again, the Dodge Charger in this production year was made smaller and that's just simply not going to work. And I think a lot of agencies are having to do that. As you look around the metropolitan area and the country are going to an SUV, they're just, for some reason, the car industry, they're not really getting, they're sort of getting out of the police car business and it's almost all SUVs, so.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'm in the podium. Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve purchase of two 2021 black and white Ford Police Interceptor SUVs from Shawnee Mission Ford at a total price of $88,886.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consider approval of water pollution control repair, clarify, of clarify number one, clarifier number one.
We have our Public Works Director, Mike McDonald, and then our WPC Superintendent, Tim Gordato here tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. This is a request this evening to approve the replacement sweep arms and components of the final clarifiers. The representatives from our recommended low bidder are on the meeting also this evening if you have questions with them or their product. The final clarifiers are, there are two of them, they are the round basins. Seeing the photo on the screen, they're at the south end of the plant. And they are, used to be the last step that wastewater was treated with before it was discharged to the Missouri River, but we added the ultraviolet disinfection system so that now it goes from the final clarifiers to the UV system. In 2019, we discovered that the mechanisms had, one of the clarifiers had failed and had got bound up in the rest of the works and it pretty much just broke it off and shut it down. And further review with the manufacturer's representative who came out to look at the damage where, they were built in 1972 and that was a long time ago. And we should look for a way to replace them over the next year or two. Our original plan was to replace one in 2020 and one in 2021. Between the COVID, some staff changes and just general trying to keep up, we did not replace one in 2020, although we did repair the one that was broken to the point that it was functional, requires additional daily maintenance from our staff. Tim worked with, or engineers with the Black and Beach to review plans and look at clarifier technology. The truth is, it hasn't changed a lot in the, since the 70s. And we were able to find, believe, three manufacturers of similar equipment.
That's great.
At some point, that becomes a bit, bit of a concern because really the easiest one to put a bid together is the one that supplied the one in the 70s because nothing's fundamentally changed and they're most able to adapt their equipment to the new, the new equipment to the old system. And that's what we saw when we requested proposals to replace the clarifier arms. I think you see them referred to as mechanisms or arms, that it is, it is that part of the system, not the entire basin. The proposal we received, we asked, we asked for quotes from the various vendors to repair one unit or to repair both units. And our recommendation to the City Commission this evening is to adopt a proposal that would repair both units, improve it both at the same time for some meaningful cost savings. It took a while to kind of figure the dollar values out of this because they were a little bit unclear and we've been on the phone with the, both the manufacturer of the clarifier arms, which is ClearStream. And the, their designated qualified installation company is JCI, who we have worked with on other similar matters over the years. We're familiar with them and their capabilities. Ultimately, our recommendation to staff is to approve repairs for two clarifiers with two separate contracts. One is related to ClearStream for $254,175. That is manufacturing the materials and having them delivered to our site. And the other is with JCI to install them, and that would be $169,842. In the broad sense, these things take a while to make, they're made to order. And then if this is approved, we would expect representatives from Clearwater or from ClearStream to be on-site within the next two weeks to verify the measurements so that they make something that fits, minimal difficulties putting it together at that point. And we would expect to see the completed arms delivered to the treatment plant by October. And at that point, it's about a two-week exercise to assemble them and get them reactivated. And unfortunately, that's the nature of long lead times for specialty equipment. But that is, that was similar for all, all of the vendors, time, the timeframe for that. There are still a couple of other odds and ends, I would say loose ends, one of which is the walking bridge that takes you from outside the clarifier, standing on the ground to the center of the clarifier. It is scheduled to be removed and repainted and reset. There is a chance it may need repairs, but we cannot tell that till we can get it off and get it looked at and inspected. If it needs to be repaired or serious sandblasting or something, there may be a charge to take it off-site to do that and bring back. That was not included in the proposals based on the uncertainties if we actually needed it or not. That is, I believe, the conclusion of the prepared remarks. Tim has been living with a limping clarifier for well over a year and I know he's excited about this. If you have any questions of myself or Tim?
Mike mentioned that JCI is on the line.
Oh, yes, JCI and ClearStream were both on the, on the phone call here this evening.
Oh, okay, good. Yeah, no, I have a question for either Mr. McDonald or Mr. Gordato. Okay, so you have the two clarifiers and they both need to be replaced. The one already has been?
It was damaged and then kind of repaired.
They somewhat?
Tim, just slide that over.
It was damaged, then it was just repaired so we could use it. It's not totally repaired.
Will both of them be able, since maybe these companies or came out and looked at them, will they both make it to October? We're hoping or?
We hope so.
Yeah. And then on the bridge, I guess that's something, when are they supposed to take that off to paint?
We won't know about that until they're here to install the new one because they have to take the old one out.
Okay.
So you don't know if it needs any extensive repairs. It is scheduled to be repainted.
Right.
But we don't know if it needs additional repairs. If it does, it may need to be taken off-site for those.
And that'd be something I guess you'd have to come back to us for on that. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, any other questions?
I just, I just have a question and maybe the gentleman or one of the gentlemen on the call can answer, but this technology is, I mean, it's getting pretty old, right? And I know it's effective, but it's back early 70s technology, so we're good here for the next, for this next year and hopefully for at least a few years. But long-term, what, what do you see, Mr. Gordato, as far as, or maybe the representatives, is there going to be a change as far as the equipment that will be used at the plant?
At this time, there's no plans to change any of the, any of the processes at this time, so it'll be good for another 20 or, you know, however long till they tell us we need to change what we're doing.
And the, and the repair parts for, you know, for other repair parts and things like that, do you think they'll still be available? Will they still be available?
Yeah, in some form yet, somebody will be able to manufacture them, probably the same companies.
Right, this is, this is a very common technology for the times.
Okay.
And it's very cost-effective, too. It's run anti-trouble-free for decades.
Yes.
And these types of plants are becoming less common. There are just a handful of them left in Kansas because so many of them have had to upgrade to a different treatment process, but they still have some level of final clarifiers and then with similar mechanisms.
Okay.
We believe our, our discussions with PDHE are, we will not be in that new plant environment for at least 20 or 30 years, primarily because our wastewater plant discharges directly to the Missouri River and Missouri River has not been found by the EPA to be what they call an impaired stream where it has water quality issues that require additional compliance. So that does not appear likely to happen anytime soon and then there's a long period to address it if it were to happen.
Okay, so we've got some longevity. I'm glad I asked the question, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, please refer to this page of the revised staff recommendations for your motion and I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move this to City, we approve the proposal for repair of the final clarifiers, option number two, purchase for repair of both files for $44,017, which includes materials from ClearStream Environmental in an amount now $254,175. An installation from JCI in an amount now $169,842.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, whoever's on the phone.
Yes.
Thank you guys.
Who is on the phone, Mr. McDonald?
It's Brandon Ford with JCI and Larry DeBurke with ClearStream.
Do they have anything to say?
I don't know. They may.
You didn't ask them.
Now that we've approved you today, do you have anything to say, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't know.
We'll be out in two weeks to start taking measurements. Within two weeks, as soon as they can get them emptied and available to get us in there.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
One thing I forgot, under public comment, I forgot to ask if there was any other public comment for this evening? Nothing else? Okay, good. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I move to approve the claims for February 20, 2021 through March 5, 2021, in the amount of $1 million, $1,082,164.12. Net amount paid, net amount for payroll, number four effective February 26, 2021, in the amount of $345,633.13, includes police and fire picture, in the amount of $9,624.04.
Very good.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye, thank you. Mr. Kramer, anything?
Executive session, 15 minutes?
Yeah, okay, then we'll come back and discuss anything else after that.
Sure.
Okay, 15 minutes. Okay. Just need to read that, just a second. Oh, yeah.
Could you please add Taylor Tedder to the list? I don't know if it's on there on the motion.
It is.
Oh, is it? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, it is. So we would come back here at 7:40, 25, 15 minutes?
Yeah, 7:42, let's give ourselves a minute to go over there.
7:42.
Yep.
Okay, can I do this? I move to recess into executive session to discuss economic development opportunities per KSA 75-4319B4 to discuss data related to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships. The open meeting to resume in the City Commission chambers at 7:42 p.m. City Manager Paul Kramer and Assistant City Manager Taylor Tedder are requested to be present during the executive session.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye, thank you. Mr. Kramer, any other, any other business for this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We'll go around the horn and see if anybody's got anything they wanted to say tonight. Mr. Griswold?
No, just, just a reminder, because I went back and looked at some emails today and just a reminder, because I saw AT&amp;T working out on Vileus this week and they're in the middle of a, or that may be the middle, but they've started this fiber overbuild project in Leavenworth, Kansas, so just a heads up for our citizens and I guess they're during the first quarter, our network, AT&amp;T's construction, network construction crews will be working to bring fiber off the cable and superfast internet speeds to approximately 1,200 homes in the area. And an additional 2,500 homes are targeted for later this year. So that's just an FYI and I was looking at my email and then figured out yesterday that that's what I saw out there on Vileus.
Okay.
And then with respect to vaccinations, I, you know, I think they're, I think they're going well, but there's still ways to get to like 70 or 75% of all the people in the county, but, so we just need to keep doing what we've been doing as far as people and masks and social distancing and just all the public health protocols that have, that have been in place. I think the city as part of the county is, is doing well, but there's still a ways to go with respect to vaccinations and hopefully the supply will continue and maybe even get a little bit greater than it has been in the last month or so, but more vaccinations mean less risk or chance of disease transmission. So that's, just want to say that we're doing pretty well and as far as that, but hopefully we'll keep the momentum up and I would encourage everyone to get the vaccination when it's their turn.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
And that is all I have.
Okay.
As we all know, the last couple of days have been fairly windy. Tomorrow is going to be worse, they say up to 50 miles an hour. For those of you that have trash day tomorrow and Thursday, if Thursday's going to be windy, have a little consideration for the neighbors that are north of you. Put some weight on your trash or something because the trash is blowing, you know, it does break free in these heavy winds. So just take that into consideration because I think if you look at any property north of where you are, you'll end up seeing plastic bags in the trees and everything else and it's just, you know, be a little bit more cognizant of that when you put your trash out on trash days. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lee, what?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to mention that there will be a dedication Friday at 10 a.m. the soccer field behind Warren Middle School in honor of longtime soccer enthusiast Frank Mazatis and please join us.
10 o'clock?
10 o'clock.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And Commissioner Wilson asked me tonight for an update on United Way. United Way has done a lot of work for our community this year. We have actually achieved our goal and we've actually exceeded it. We've raised ourselves $200,000 and that is. We've raised ourselves $200,000, and that is thankful, we're thankful for that, for the help from the city, from PPP loans and for other grants that, since we haven't had so many events, I've had more time to apply for. And so anyway, we've been very fortunate, and there are some donors out there that are very generous this year with the way that things were worked. We have also been able to raise almost $100,000 in grants for our, for our community service agencies, especially the frontline agencies that provide rent and utilities and food this year. So we're grateful for all that they provide to our community, and we always support them. And then United Way, we've given already $60,000 of our fund to those, some of those agencies as well. So anyway, I just want to say, is there any more, are there any more of the funds left for, that our organizations can apply for in the community?
Yes, so we still have some funding available for both businesses. I would encourage businesses, if you have not taken advantage of that, to contact Taylor Tetter. We've helped 47 businesses to date, and we've helped service agencies as well. And so there is some limited funding for that. If they haven't applied for second round, we've, a lot of organizations have been through first and second round. If you haven't gotten the second round or you didn't get a first round, if you haven't had two rounds, please contact us. We've reached out to all the agencies that we've only helped once, and so there is some funding left over for that, for our service agencies.
Okay. And the, and yes, reminding the businesses, please, it's a very easy application. Please apply for these funds. You might as well take advantage of them. I know everybody's struggling, but it doesn't take long to fill out an application for that. Other than that, anybody else? I'm good then. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting, Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. We are adjourned.